Our call is meeting in order. Thank all of you for being here tonight. Steve, if you would please bow your hands for identification. Our heavenly Father, we come before you asking for your continued kindness, asking for your blessings, asking for your forgiveness, and asking that you give us the wisdom, the strength, the courage to make the right decisions on behalf of this county. We thank you, O Lord, for the privilege of living in Harris County, and we ask that you help us continue to maintain it in a way that is acceptable to us all. Please be with our servicemen and women both here in the world and keep them free from harm. We ask, O Lord, that you also be with the citizens of Harris County. Those who are sick, help them heal. Those who are mourning, help them find comfort. And those who are seeking a piece of land, comfort, we ask these things in the years to come. Now I'd like to ask, uh, Commissioner Lawnmilk, if he would please do the pledge.
Going to the citizens to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for on March 15th. Do I have a motion? Second? We've got a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, say if I raise your hand. Next is appearance of citizens. If there are none, alright. Old business, any old business?
I do, Mr. Chair. I wanted to ask about the status of the springsteen study.
Okay, good. Try a new thing this time. You might have a full list of stuff, but definitely on my list. They will be here Thursday and Friday to interview department heads and constitutional officers, and then depending on how long it takes them to correct any... They're talking about the job descriptions issues they have, not necessarily pay, but that will have a bearing on where they get put in the pay scale. So as soon as they get those wrapped, and hopefully we'll have an answer, we'll press them for as soon as possible.
Please do, because this was supposed to be completed by December 31st. I know that we have asked for some extensions, but they did not meet the deadline on December 31st.
It'd be very helpful since we are getting into budgets to have that. Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
The other thing that I wanted to just kind of test the waters with the others could use, about a year, year and a half ago, Commissioner Lawnmilk brought up the subject of litter in the county, and the Harris County Chamber of Commerce undertook a program of education with their junior, their youth leadership group, and they did a great job at that, but really truly, I don't think we've done enough. And I have been getting some calls lately. I'm sure it's because the weather's nice and people are out and about, and they see the litter on the roads, a lot of dumping. But I wanted to ask, I didn't have time to research it, but Nancy or Greg, what are our ordinances, if any, against littering in the county?
Five hundred dollar fine, I believe, but...
So we do have one, and there isn't five hundred dollar fine?
Yeah, spin actually is probably the resident expert. The problem is, even if we find... Correct me if I'm wrong, Captain. Even if we find a litter with an address on it, unless you see them dumping it physically, you cannot charge them.
We've had a couple of cases already where we've found remnants of household garbage with addresses on it, and went and charged them accordingly for littering. The actual owner of that property is responsible for that property to go to the proper location. The law is, it's, we can get around that, and we've done some cases. To answer your question, just to go a little bit further, we've, I've gotten those complaints from Mr. Brown, Mike Brown also, that come across through me, through the sheriff, that we've had some citizen complaint. I got with the probate office and with Ms. Nancy. She ordered the signs to Pine Lake Road, was one of the areas, and Mike Brown called me last week. Once the signs were up, it gives a little bit more of an enforcement issue.
That was my, that was probably my next point.
It's a little bit of a deterrent, and he actually told me that Ms. Nancy had him order up several extras. So we do have some of those areas. If you would get Mike Brown to put those up, we'll get it enforced. Uh, West Point, around West Point, Old Boy Scout Road has been a bad problem, and what we're doing is we're actually going through these people's garbage to see if we can find the names and then confront them. Nine times out of ten, what we do is we give them the opportunity to pick up their trash. Instead of going to the house and charging them, we'll get them to come out there and tell them they got 24 hours to pick up their household garbage, whether it's theirs or not. The property that belongs to them is in that garbage, and most people are compliant with it to get up.
Okay, thank you. I just wondered better, because I am getting quite a few calls back in certain areas. There's one particular area in our district, and a couple in a couple other districts. So, but that, my next point was then being we could put those signs up. You know, it may keep one person from dumping, and that would even be, I'll let you know. That's all I have.
Litter is just one of these issues that's gone on forever unfortunately. And our, uh, Department of Parks has been picking up litter, and they've picked up tons and tons of litter, but obviously it keeps coming. They just have to keep fighting about it. Okay? Anyone else have any other questions? Alright, moving into new business, you have in your packets the budget schedule, which obviously is already underway. Started back in mid-March, with budget request being set to department heads, and then they would have those back April 1st. About another week, they will be meeting with the county manager and the finance officer to go over those budget requests, and then you see below when it's delivered to us in the work sessions, and final action scheduled for final public hearing on June 21st. Does anyone have any question about this before we...
I have a question. I just want to make sure that the budgets were all received from the, from the department directors by April 1st?
I'm missing two. One from the jail that apparently didn't get passed down from the sheriff, and she said she'll have it to me shortly, and the other one's from the magistrate, so I sent them reminders, got a email back from the jail saying that we would have that coming very shortly, and then haven't heard back from the magistrate, so...
And then the only other thing I noticed on the schedule, and it's an if-needed work session on May the 24th. I didn't know if we wanted to look back since that selection day, and it's at 6:00 PM. If we could possibly change that.
That's an arbitrary date, because it's not a regular meeting day.
Correct.
And sometimes we need that extra, and sometimes we don't. So it's up to y'all if you want to have it, of course.
I would say make the call on May 17th, and if y'all need it, then you can delay that.
Alright, that works for me. Thank you.
Okay, then if you see the ad in the paper, it'll have that date in there, so you can go ahead and fix it next time.
Okay. Alright, do I have a motion to approve this schedule then?
A second.
Any discussion, further discussion? All in favor, please say if I raise your hand. Motion carries. Next item of business, as we do each year, and I'm sure that we are all happy to do this again, is an annual request for proclamation to proclaim April as Organ Donor Month in Harris County. Do we have any representatives of Life Lake here? Read the proclamation. Whereas one of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life, and whereas more than 121,000 men, women, and children await life-saving or life-enhancing organ transplants, of which over 5,590 reside in Georgia, and whereas the need for organ, eye, and tissue donation grows daily as a new patient is added to the national waiting list for an organ transplant every 10 minutes, and whereas the critical donor shortage remains a public health crisis as an average of 22 people die daily due to the lack of available organs, and whereas organ, eye, and tissue donation can provide families the comfort of knowing the gift of donated organs and tissue endows another person with renewed hope for a healthy life, and whereas donating life through organ, eye, and tissue donation is the ultimate act of generosity and kindness we Harris County citizens can perform, and whereas more than 4.7 million Georgians have already registered their decision to give the gift of life at www.donatelifegorgia.org, or with getting or renewing their driver's license or state identification card at a driver's license office, and whereas Life Lake of Georgia is the nonprofit community service organization dedicated to the recovery of high-quality organs and tissues for transplantation therapy, and whereas Harris County supports the life-saving mission of Life Lake of Georgia. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Harris County, Georgia does hereby proclaim April 2016 as Donate Life Month in Harris County to honor all those who made the decision to give the gift of life, to focus attention on the extreme need for organ, eye, and tissue donation, to encourage all residents to take action and sign up on Georgia's donor registry at www.donatelifegorgia.org to discuss the miracle of transplantation as a family and to make a family commitment to organ, eye, and tissue donation, so proclaim this fifth day of April 2016. I move that that be approved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second, discussion. All in favor, say if I raise your hand. Motion carries. The next item, petition for road acceptance of Maddox Road Northeastment. Petition was signed by 88% of the property owners, saying that, and acknowledging that they understood they would be assessed for survey title searches, right-of-way deed preparation, and driveway pipe if needed, and that the cost per property owner was estimated to be slightly less than $500 per parcel. If we decide to move forward, a survey will be performed, and Mr. Taylor will do the title searches and prepare any of the right-of-way deeds. However, since this petition was received, the Board of Commissioners office has received a phone call, and they received it last week on March the 29th, from one of the signers of the petition, who indicated that neither, neither that, that person nor that person's offspring, that was also a signer, would pay any assessment cost associated with the road acceptance. So in essence, that reduces to 63%, or only five out of you that are willing to accept, to move forward with, with the knowledge that they, they well be billed a little bit less than $500.
This lady who called so that they could all chip in $500 to grab on the road, that was her who got...
I noticed in our code, Chapter 4, Section 121, said that a minimum of 80% must be in agreement to both donate the right-of-way and to share the particular costs, so it's kind of tied. Vegas must, in the other section.
You're correct. It's kind of way out of that, but I, we needed to discuss that, to make a decision accordingly.
The gentleman who was pushing this, I told him it would be on the agenda for action. He may not have been aware of the phone call, but I see it.
Okay. Is there anyone here from Maddox Road tonight? Okay. Not anyone. We add...
May I make a suggestion? Table, and, uh, that the person, if the table and the person informed that two people have decided no, and then will vote, and until the time when they decide, so that they give us a positive answer.
So it's table indefinitely?
Yeah.
Can we not just deny it indefinitely?
There is, is there, there's no delay on this, I mean, we can, we can deny it?
You can deny it, there's no...
They can still come back and give a, have a, come back with...
There's no waiting period, though.
Yeah, no wait.
Yeah, but indefinitely, yes.
Well, let's just table it till the next meeting, and if there's any change.
Yeah, yeah, let it know, and that, is that alright with everyone? Okay. Okay. Next statement, next item is the financial statement for January this year. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion, let me do it.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Discussion.
I have, I have a question, not necessarily about what is in this financial statement, but our county manager mentioned several months ago that you were going to look at making the airport a separate department?
That'll be in this next budget, yes, ma'am.
That will be in the next budget. I would like to see something, we're spending a lot of money out there, and I would really like to see something on the airport as to how we're doing.
Yeah.
Gas sales-wise, you know, the, the renting of the hammers and that sort of thing, so if y'all could put something like that together.
Paul's making an announcement.
Thank you.
And I think probably, Paul, in that, we need to go back to the time that we first started doing our improvements out there.
That would be great.
Some of which we, you know, were on the federal government, but, and just kind of show how, how, you know, what has already been paid for, paid back where we put it out.
Kind of want to pick assets, see.
Yeah, yeah, where we stand, and how we move forward to making that a profitable operation in it.
Speaking of airport, replace the beacon.
I've got that on my list, and like you, it's just one of my old list.
Okay.
I have questions on just a couple of little things. Looking at the, um, the schedule of revenue, this occupation taxes and right under occupation license taxes, is that, they're different numbers, but one shows no revenue, so I didn't look out, it's just the same thing.
I think there's two.
Mr. Nadyuk, please.
I get confused myself on that.
Yeah, 3801-351, and we get occupation taxes, but the occupation license tax, I'm not sure about that actually.
Occupation license tax is an annual fee that gets paid to the Board of Commissioners if the planning for the future development. Now, the occupation tax, I'm a little foggy on myself.
We could check that out.
And then I noticed there's a, on the backside of that same sheet, about new ways of school resource officer.
That was something that the sheriff pulled the rug on us this year. The school board did pay $50,000 a year for, as sheriff did cover it.
Okay.
And then the sheriff changed policy, and he just, I guess they just pay the officers individually now, so that'll be struck for the next business through the next budget.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say if I raise your hand. Motion carries. Any other new business? Alright, we're going to move into county manager's portion. First item is the bid award for water treatment plant improvements. Greg?
Okay, I, I can explain a little bit about it, but we have Jeb here from Waterworks and Matt Smith from our engineering firm, Carp's Loop, to explain the project a little bit more, but what this will do is increase our capacity for our sedimentation ponds, which will give us about 350,000 more gallons per day treatment capability. They have, that's what part of this land acquisition, the Saunders Brothers' board that we've been going through, and the bid on that was Schmidt Environmental Construction out of Auburn, Alabama, for $2,400, $514,000 even, and if you have any questions on that, Matt can answer the specifics on that, and did y'all bring some charts and stuff you wanted to...
Matt, why don't you and Jeb come forward.
Hold on a second, let me see it.
Jeb, while we're getting ready for this, I, I know you're personally aware of one compliment we've gotten, and I just got one earlier this week, on the way that our water department was comporting themselves throughout the county, to most, most glowing terms about how well our water department is, and I think, and we all know Jeb's a real treasure, and Jeb, we just want to thank you on behalf of all of us for attempting to do such a good job here. And please let your employees know how much they appreciate it.
Well, remember that when y'all get some bad jobs.
But you know, as you all know, it's very seldom you get...
That's good, we're good. So we've gotten two, I was coming in, you know, that's, you know, it's good. I really appreciate it.
What I handed you out was some summary sheets for some of the plan sheets I was working on, construction plan, you get some highlights of what we're doing at the treatment plant, and also some aerial images that may be a little bit easier to see the picture of, but at the treatment plant, it's a 3 million gallon a day plant that's running at about 83% efficiency, so we're getting about 2.5 million of that 3 million gallons a day, which we're actually producing to the system. This would allow us to get an extra 300,000 gallons a day out of a plant, maximize the efficiency without having to increase our withdrawal permit. So the 300,000 that we can increase production at the plant would offset Clums Waterworks' purchase at a higher rate, so offsetting, I think we figured about $2 per thousand, that was back in 2010.
It's probably closer to 225, 235,000.
That we're saving with these improvements versus buying it from a loan, because we can produce it so much cheaper at the plant, where we've got all the existing infrastructure versus buying it from a loan at a higher rate.
That'd be a little over around 700, close to 750,000 dollars a year in savings off the treatment.
It's about 50, I think we figured based off of what the loan repayment would be, you'd net about $60,000 savings while paying off the improvements cost after the difference.
Then we'll pay for the...
And then some, then about $60,000 more. But this is, as I said, roughly what we're doing here is the yellows and improvements, the alum lagoons, concrete set basin, and this is the parking lot improvements, but we've got to get some dirt to be able to grid the site out from the Saunders property. The green shaded area is the temporary road that we've got to build to bring the road, bring the dirt over to the site, and then we've got to have permanent access, that we're working with John Taylor on, trying to, between Saunders and Georgia Power, get us permanent access to the 7.7 acres that we're purchasing from the Saunders. Schmidt Environmental, I think you have many copies of the, at least one, I patched out the bids, Schmidt Environmental was low bid, with PF Moon being second load, and I think there was a several difference, several hundred thousand dollar difference in the two.
400.
395,000.
Yeah. And what you have map-wise is the smaller version of this, along with some of the plans for the temporary borrow road going from Georgia Power over to treatment plant, a little bit of a blow-up for the borrow pit on Saunders property, and then proposed improvements at the treatment plant itself.
And it's about a one-year project?
Yes. We have a funding deadline on this project that we have to start construction, at least start issuing the notice of receipt to the contractor by May 24th, before we start having to pay penalties on the money, the loan money from Jifa, and it was due to acquisition of this property. We've had to extend the loan period several times because of issues with property acquisition.
Since you and I talked last, did you had any discussion with them?
I have not since last week when you and I talked.
John, I, I would, I know we've made a request for the temporary access or easement there, but as far as, we're okay with the utility?
That's what you will be looking at, I think in a little bit longer, Greg's agenda, or what maybe, I don't know, John's guy, is the green highlight temporary easement.
I would say if we can certainly have that part finalized, that there's really no instant time pressure on the temporary easement through, over the Saunders property.
It would be only what John feels comfortable with, and plus acquiring the 7.7 acres, so we can borrow the dirt from that site.
Just wondering about, you know, when we can do bid and close it, if we're okay.
As soon as you tell me to go, I'll go and title work on it, you know. There's two issues, of course, was, if you buy it, and we've got an access easement to part this ferry road, you've got to piss your windlock off, and the issue is trying where that pink is, is trying to get something worked out with the Saunders too, so we can have access to the, to the property. The other, the green is, is on the agenda tonight for you to approve, of course, it's going to be contingent on being able to acquire the property, the way you're going to get the dirt.
And right now, we have Georgia Power that has allowed us, at least in saying that we can use their driveway for access, permanent access, but we've not, we have that easements platted, and good with that process with them first, so this is still a little bit up in the air, along with the Saunders easement.
I, I would call Mr. Saunders in. I may have left him with the wrong impression, I told him that our use of that temporary or that easement was not time critical, but I don't want it to slow down the others, so...
Well, and as far as us constructing this or using it?
Use is not time critical, but we did, and he had said he would talk to the others, so I'll follow up. Yeah, he has questions?
So the funding is coming from Jifa?
Yes, sir.
What kind of interest rate are you looking at?
1.4%. It was set back in 2011 when we ran for the loan was awarded, it was 1.4% in 2016.
So we're actually going to approve this in 2011?
Yes, sir.
For...
Well, it's just been a long process with the property acquisition, and we've changed things several times, but yes, it's been, so that's why they're pushing us to, to use the money since it's so old.
And when will we be required to start paying that loan?
Once the money is drawn down, the project's completed, the loan will be closed out, and then you start the repayment process.
About after?
About after, so it's a year into, a year after construction begins, is when we'll close the project out.
So the interest accumulating during that period?
You have construction interest, yes, ma'am?
Same, right.
I believe so.
So he says it's a one-year completion, so it's going to take a year to get the increased production of 300,000?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Question, just out of curiosity, to learn, on the bid tabulation sheet, where you have a base bid and then an accepted equal?
Yes, ma'am.
Does accepted equal mean the company is equal, or that, what they submitted, because there was a significant price difference, rate price difference?
Right, we felt like the base bid was our basis for design, that was preferred option, and then we had offered some alternate pricing, just to see what the pricing would be, that was acceptable product, acceptable company, and there were several...
Yeah, there were some others. This was the main here, and I just didn't know if they're really meeting all the specs.
They are.
What would be the reason for choosing the higher?
The higher it was, as much on, and I think there's at least two of those in the recommendation of award, that we chose to go with lower alternate bids versus the base bid, but the only reason to go with a higher would be for the equipment reps and their servicing. If we thought the service on the alternate product wasn't as good, and it was going to cause the treatment plant... to cause the treatment plant operators some headache in the long run.
You know, that's what I'm telling you, but is it apples to apples?
The product may be the same, but the service may be different. So that would be the only reason why we would suggest going with a higher cost one. And I think, as at least two of those products, we went with the alternate to cause of that, the lesser value, lesser per cost.
I appreciate that.
Back on the funding, if the funds are good, we don't have to start paying the loan back until after the project is completed, so we'll get the increased production. And the money that we save for producing our own waters, the code divided from Columbus, will provide sufficient.
Yes, sir.
To pay the loan.
It'll pay the loan back, plus it should have a sixty thousand dollar net positive a year for the Water Works. Fifty-eight and some change, I think is what we calculated, based off of what the rate was in two thousand eleven, so I know it's going up for.
It will more than pay for itself, yes. Good deal.
Any other questions? Anything else you want to share? Do I have a motion?
I got a question.
Is that for Schmidt? Can we make a motion?
Show it to him.
Schmidt?
Yes, yes. Okay, do we have a second? Is there any other discussion on the survey sheet? Yes, sir, if you have a question, let me see if I can.
He already voted on it, I guess it's an all point.
All right, Greg's alluded several times to project status. I have a public hearing, so you're just going to have to. Okay, all right, go ahead. Okay, good. If commissioners, please fill out your couple of interest statements. We will, I will call the meeting, call the public hearing to order, and then read the application. The applicant or his or her representative will make their presentation. That will then be followed by comments of individuals in favor of the application, and then that will be, after that will be comments from individuals in opposition to the application. After that is concluded, there will be no more citizen comments on the public hearing. The applicant or his or her representative will then be able to make rebuttal of any remarks that were brought up and make the closing statement. Commissioners will then ask questions, and after that, we will close the public hearing and take. The, I can't see the wrong thing there. The, this is an application for Hager Houston Builders for, to rezone from A1 to R1, some forty-one point eight seven acres, Land Lot Twelve, Land District Nineteen, MAP O-48, Parcel O-11. Present use is recreation and the proposed use was residential home sites. Mr. Houston, however, has advised the planning commission and made his comments there, and he is, wants to also ask that we, he be allowed to withdraw this application. Mr. Houston are one of his representatives here. Okay. That is, is the request from them. It was granted by the planning commission, and I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chinman, I'd like to make the motion that we accept the letter of withdrawal. This is a district authority, and that's the district that I represent. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, allowing the withdrawal. Any other discussion?
Do we know why?
I think he said it's going to be financially unpeaceful, he's going to help the property once he evaluated. I'm getting a nod, I'm right in the back. Okay, any discussion on that? Call in favor, please, if I raise my hand. Motion carries. Okay, the next application is the application of JP Thayer Company for Eldersland Development Company to amend the rezoning conditions of the six hundred and sixty-five acres located in land lots one twenty-nine, one thirty, one fifty-nine, and one sixty, Land District Eighteen, MAP O-84, Parcel O-50, to increase the number of lots from a max, three hundred maximum that was in the original approval to a maximum of three hundred and fifty. Property is located on Autumn Trail Way in Elders. The other conditions in that rezoning, which was November oh-six of two thousand and one, where the dwellings were limited, this three hundred, on the entire tract with no less, with no lot less than one acre, that the driveway cuts along three fifteen be limited unless there were no other reasonable access, that all lots are being connected to county water, there is to be a one hundred foot uncleared buffer around the property, and then all water issues are to be worked out with the Harris County Water Works prior to any construction or foot-ups. Those, those were the conditions. The planning commission heard this at their last meeting, and after hearing so, they voted and recommended approval, the zoning condition to three hundred and fifty lots, and that all new lots are a minimum of one acre. So I believe Warren Mason has assumed the table up here, Moon Meets Mason, representee of Thayer, and Warren.
Thank you. And I have Mr. Thayer here with me this evening. He's putting his faith in me and said he was going to sit back and listen to it, so with that said, it's a pleasure to be here. I am Warren Mason with Moon Meets Mason, bits and civil engineers, land surveyors. It's been our pleasure to help Mr. Thayer and the development team with Eldershaw Place. The request, again, is to increase the mapping number of lots to no more than three fifty. Under the current zoning, the number was restricted to three hundred. And just as a matter of history on this, Mr. Thayer and the team purchased this previous timber property and decided to develop it, we were not engaged at the time, at the benefit of a sketch, or some of the restrictions or agreements. And at that particular meeting and rezoning, my understanding that there was a decision just to save three hundred lot max, and of course, certainly, they agreed to that. And it's been our pleasure to help them develop it. The project almost acts as a conservation subdivision, when you take into account the buffers we've had. One of the restrictions were driveway access to three fifteen, and we've been able to complete zero driveways on three fifteen, just two points of entrance into the property, one that's existing and one that will be in a future section to help with traffic circulation. And we put a lot of natural undisturbed buffers into some of the natural areas and drainage ways through the development, so it's a project we're quite proud of. We anticipate next month submitting the plat for section five, which would be thirty-three lots, which will bring us to a total of two hundred and ninety-one lots over the course of the development. So that's about fifteen years worth of development, and that leaves us with about a hundred and two acres left. I'm not sure if the, if the map that I have migrated to your department from, did it? Okay, so you have a benefit of looking at it. Once we put the lots on record next month, there'll be about a hundred and three acres left, and we did a conceptual layout under the same design standards, and that takes us greater than the three hundred lots currently. So the desire is to, now that we have a plan, now that we have the direction, now that we've got a track record of having a quality project, we've laid it out and would like to extend that number beyond the three hundred that was initially said at the previous rezoning meeting. So with that, I'd be more than glad to entertain any questions that you have.
Confused about the number of lots.
Sure.
So have you moved up so far?
Present, I'm going to say after next month, because we have thirty-three lots where we've just recently paved the street. So at the end of next month, when the plan is put on record, we will have planted and put on record two hundred and ninety-one lots. So.
How many houses have been constructed, constructed on those lots?
There would not be any construction on the thirty-three lots we are just now putting on record. As far as the rest of the development, Mr. Thayer may very well can answer how many undeveloped lots are in there. I'm not sure about that specific number.
I don't think there are any undeveloped lots in there. I think there's probably about two hundred and fifty-eight houses.
I think that's the main reason we're cutting these next thirty-three lots, that it's been a very successful and well-received development. I don't think there's a number of undeveloped lots scattered throughout.
Is this the section that you're going?
That's correct. The area that Commissioner Chin pointed to is section five, which will be thirty-three lots, which will bring us up to the two ninety-one. So theoretically, we've got a hundred and two acres left and nine lots till we reach that three hundred number. So again, it's, it's the developer and the owner's desire, continue on with the same rules and regulations we've been under, providing the natural easement areas, lots in excess of one acre, natural zones, curb and gutter, the balance and develop, which will take us beyond the three hundred number, but certainly, no more than three fifty.
I do have a question. Is there any reason why the entire tract is not developed for the three hundred acres, knowing that it had already been restricted to that?
I think originally, when you look at a tract that size, you kind of have to fade it off in chunks, and some of it had to do with soils. We tried to take advantage of good soils and put lots where opportunities provided themselves. So just by the nature of having a section, laying it out, establishing buffers, using the good soils, we sort of worked ourselves into where we are now.
Affirm to this, please, ma'am. What's the difference between the yellow and?
The yellow and the green? The green area is, on my map, is shaded, much like it is on some of those. So when the yellow highlighter went on, I think it sort of turned it into green. But those green areas or the shaded areas represent some of the undisturbed natural buffers, easements throughout the development. And those accomplish a couple of things. A, it gives some separation between homes, gives a more natural, more rural feel, also provides some buffers along drainage ways. So in that particular map, I think when the future section we're talking about, the hundred two acres highlighted in yellow, it just ironically turned some of those natures into green.
Well, that's appropriate.
It is appropriate.
So this, this green area would still be deeded to homeowners? It just wouldn't be built by?
No, what we've been doing on most of these is, while there is a homeowner's group, the natural areas are absorbed as part of the lots, the lots extend beyond into those areas. And if members of the reserve are right, the restrictions are that there should be left in a natural condition as far as enlarged trees. But the homeowner does have at least two opportunities to do some work in those areas. One, if weather comes through or disease damages trees, the owner has the right to take someone down, it's a safety issue. And secondly, if they have problems with their own site sanitary systems and they need a reserve area or a better soils area, in that particular instance, they can't extend and use some of their lot, which is currently encumbered with an undisturbed buffer. But generally, the idea is to leave those areas in a natural condition.
Would that be part of deed restrictions?
It certainly is part of the plat. In the plat, it outlines that it's an undisturbed natural easement area, and on the plat itself, it states those, those restrictions. Couple of other things I'd just like to say is, there's a lot of infrastructure that developers brought to the property. They even provided land from Harris County to have a water tower in there, and I think they've been a good neighbor to the community, and we're excited about continuing on and bringing the project in every possible way.
And this, this would then utilize all of the acreage?
Yes.
That, that takes the whole six hundred and sixty-five.
That's right. When we put these final lots on record, these fifty-five next month, that'll leave us with a hundred and two acres, and we are anticipating possibly that's going to be around fifty lots there, which will take us less than the three fifty we're asking for. And we'll at that point exhaust the development.
So what would be the total number of lots?
We anticipate it's probably going to be three forty-two, and we could have made a demand or request from three hundred to three forty-two, but just easy math, we said no more than three fifty.
All right, are there any citizens here who wish to speak in favor of this application? Any citizens wishing to speak in favor? Any citizens here wishing to speak in opposition to this application? Yes, sir. Come forward, state your name, your address, and make your comments.
I'm Kevin O'Connor, I live in, I'm not, I have the same opposition as last week. We just heard that we're buying water from Columbus. I was going to ask earlier, this fifty plus the other seventy that was proposed for expansion, one of those numbers were going to come into that profit margin. When they came online, all these seventy homes, we're going to be sucking up water off of our, what the county-based taxpayers are paying for. And it's a great point, and what I'm saying is, I'm grateful the houses are here, I'm grateful they're coming, but our kids can't get books in the schools? We got to buy water from Columbus. At what point are you going to address your infrastructure if you keep expanding a hundred at a time?
Thanks, sir. Appreciate your question.
Could you guys answer that for us?
Yeah.
I think this is a matter of public comment, for you to, as opposed to an active question and answer.
Okay, yeah. Go ahead, make your comment, then I'll.
My name's Steve Register, I'm at seven, seven six, and I'm here to drive, Sheriff Martin, coming with the Eldershaw Place subdivision. And I felt like I needed to come and speak. I was here nearly fifteen years ago, where the developer first came here, first came to this commission and asked for them to approve and to build. That man, I think, has asked for three hundred and fifty and three hundred and fifty-five houses in the development. There were several restrictions put on that was conditional for the given to, to put in three hundred houses on, I think, six hundred and sixty-five acres. What I don't understand is why, over the last nearly fifteen years, they haven't been able to figure out a plan on how to put three hundred lots on the six hundred and sixty-five acres. They had been before the planning commission, they had different plaques approved for different lot sizes, and each time, it seems like those lots got smaller and smaller. So now we're to the point that all of a sudden, they have all the plan left. And Mr. Mason pointed out that they tried to do their best by recognizing good soils and developing around that, you know, for specific things and all that, and I understand that. I said, but the larger lots would have been more consistent to that, not smaller lots. I didn't remember at the planning commission that suggested that we allow one acre lots when it came before the planning commission board a couple of weeks ago. I think we have a regulation now in the county that no new lots will be platted for less than two acres. Now, some people might say that this was grandfathered in. The only thing that was really grandfathered in was that it was an agreement made and a word given, and a promise made to all of the people that showed up fifteen years ago in opposition to the subdivision, that there would only be three hundred homes built on that site. That promise was not kept. So now we're asking for it to be developed and new lots be added. And I understand that progress goes on and things change, it doesn't remain the same. And I think that Eldershaw Place subdivision was very good development, and the homes there are nice and represent the county well. I do feel like that we should hold a standard, and if we do allow any further construction in there, that the rules should be applied and that those lots be two acre minimum, every lot is two acre. And one of the reasons I say that is the building construction standards have changed since the original houses that they built. The original houses had to be pretty much all brick, seventy, eighty percent of them were resite brick. A lot of the newer houses are using a lot less expensive construction. What that does is it hurts some of the existing homeowners there when they get ready for resale. I'm a realtor, I'm a real estate broker. I've seen this happen a lot where. I've seen this happen a lot where there was a subdivision, it started as quality construction, and then it got cheaper as the subdivision played out. And then the original people that bought in there were affected by the appraisals on the new construction. So all in all, I'm not totally opposed to it being developed. I think it just needs to be done fairly. I think that somebody dropped the ball when they didn't plan on putting three hundred lots on the acreage that they agreed to use for three hundred lots. What they're asking for us to do now is come back and just disregard what the commission said nearly fifteen years ago on that condition. And I still don't see how, fifteen years, they could figure out how to do what the commission asked them to do, what they agreed. So, that being said, if you do agree to allow further extension in Ellis Place, I would ask that you do suggest and highly recommend to get a two-acre minimum block. Because if you don't, every developer that comes up here and wants to build is going to point his finger and say, they allowed them to build one-acre lots, why can't we? And if they say they're grandfathered in, they were grandfathered in, put three hundred on six hundred and fifty-five acres. Hold them grandfathered in. So that's all I have to say, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Register.
Mr. Register, I'm sorry, I need to understand where you live, where do you reside?
Eleven-seven-seven-six, Mount Airy Drive.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other comments in opposition? Yes, sir.
Also, when we last meet, we discussed the architectural review. And they stated the architectural review is done by the builder. If you do go forward, I suggest the homeowners' association chair the architectural review, and you don't put the box in charge of the hen house.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments in opposition? Mr. Mason, you've spoken. You've loaded statements.
I appreciate Mr. Register talking about what a quality subdivision is, because it's one that we're quite proud of. And I think we've done a good job of honoring what I keep hearing are some of the desires of Harris County, which are a rural, it can fill, not a sea of backyards and driveways on state routes and large roads like three fifteen. You know, topography, soils, and a lot of things, claims and development, not every piece can be cookie-coated in certain ways. I think we've done a fine job of laying this out, curvatures, roads, and lots. Yes, some of them are one acre, the soils are great, and topography is fine. We have some that are one acre. We've certainly got some that are five acres and bigger lots, so, land lots. So, given the criteria that we're given in the parcel of land, I think it's a reasonable request to continue on with Ellis Place in the same standards and the same vein that we've laid out from day one. And we just respectfully request that the submission be heard and reviewed accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Mason.
Can I sleep?
Yes, sir.
I'll be very brief. I appreciate everybody's interest, and my name is John Playa, and I'm the managing director, developer of Ellis Place. And let me give you a brief history, and if I stand up and bother me sitting down. The original rezoning, and I think Mr. Wayne has probably heard of me in rezonings since two thousand and one, so hard to remember these things, but they set all of the criteria of how we were supposed to develop the subdivision. And we agreed that that was fine. And I don't remember if it was before the vote or after the vote, but there was one commissioner who felt that he just couldn't approve the whole thing, even based on the guidelines for the design, for the engineers that designed by him. So he said, I want to put three hundred cap. You know, what do you do? I mean, we said, fine, that's what's right. I asked if he would let them come up with a number, but he felt like three hundred was the number. So, we did that, and, but I want to mention also that, and Jeff's here, he can remember it very well, the water out there was inaccurate, and so I paid over two hundred thousand dollars. Ever remember, to bring the water from Highway twenty-seven all the way up to the property? Everybody out three fifteen are aware of a benefit by that, which is fine. And we gave a water tank site, and we minimized the number of access out on Highway three fifteen. I think we really built probably the nicest subdivision in Harris County that you can find anywhere. And it'll stand up to Indian Columbus or wherever. So what I'm saying is, I think we've done a remarkable job. If you go out there and you look, I wrote, there were two houses for sale, and two hundred and seventy-something houses, and somebody informed me that one of them sold over the weekend, resales. So, it's a great area, somewhere that maintains itself, and there's a lot of pride from the homeowners. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Mr. Taylor, so, what I understand from what you just said, the three hundred number was just purely an arbitrary number?
That's right. He said that he couldn't just let it go. He wanted to put three hundred minimums.
How many houses were you requesting at the time, in two thousand and one?
How many houses? Well, we didn't know. We hadn't, you don't have any design on that large tract. We didn't know what the criteria would be, and it was an eighth and a half average with a minimum of one acre. And certain restrictions around perimeter and stuff like that. Once we got that, they went to work on it and came up with a schematic drawing of the whole thing. But you've got to go back to the engineer and stuff like that to be able to turn what you can and what you can't. So we didn't know.
So your original request was you didn't have a specific hundred houses?
No. We didn't come ask for any amount. Like I said, I didn't know if the guideline would let us do two fifty or three hundred or three fifty. I had no idea. But now we are at the end of it, doing exactly what we were told to do, and we've got a hundred and two, a hundred and four acres left. You know, it's a beautiful place, and the whole design comes with one last entryway out on Highway three fifteen, which will be only three coming out on Highway three fifteen. Got any other questions?
Anyone else have any questions, Mr. Taylor? Thank you, Mr. Taylor. John, I have one question for you, whether we're closing the hearing or not.
If nothing else, if anything, I mean, if you're going to go forward, you're welcome.
Yeah. We appreciate your consideration. Okay, then I will close the hearing. Thank you. I do have a question, John. The point has been appropriately made, that we do have a two-acre minimum lot size now. And I don't know whether that is superseded by the original conditions on the property, which said that it didn't mention three hundred lots, and maybe that comes into play too, but that there would be no less than one acre lots. So does that?
At that time, the way I remember, the way I, the zoning provided for one-acre lots, minimums.
Correct.
And so he had this whole thing rezoned for two, for R1, but you put a limit of three hundred lots on it. So I think now, that, and there was a point made that, you know, that ought to be limited to, or anything now ought to be two acres. I don't think we can put that minimum on it because it's been rezoned for that. You have other subdivisions in the county that were rezoned when they had one acre minimums. So I think it is, my gut reaction is that it's, you know, one acre minimum, you know, for the lots, for whatever's left for this subdivision.
So, to use Mr. Register's term, then, it's your opinion that this addition to this development would be grandfathered, as far as relative to two-acre minimum part?
Yes. Grandfathered for the one acres, but because it was all zone, rezoned at the time, that's what it was. And one of the commissioners made the motion by, I think it was Chairman Bridges, just to limit the lots to three hundred, as a zoning condition, which you could do. But I think that that condition is something, if it is removed, then you are looking at one acre minimums, because the whole thing was rezoned at the time when you had one acre minimum lots. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir. I think so.
It may not be the answer you want, but, you know, you could.
I think you've got dueling conditions here. That's my problem.
Yeah, there's nothing to say you couldn't take those lots and increase them, you know, to three-ten. I mean, that's still, I think, within your call, but if you had to have one acre minimum lots that they've built, I don't think you can come in here and say, yeah, we can have seven hundred lots, and, you know, so your lot size would be less than one acre. No. At the time, this was rezoned, that was what you required with the lots, was one acre.
All right.
Otherwise, if you don't, then you could, you know, keep bumping the one acre, the lot, minimum lot size, up to the point where you could make it up to three acre minimum, and then all of a sudden, you know, you squeeze somebody out of all of, of everything that they were doing with the development. And this is just not something you see every day. Usually you see a rezoning completely, not a removal or a modification of the zoning condition. I don't remember one for, for why we haven't had many of where you put a condition on, and then you come back and remove it or modify it.
I can remember one or two.
Yeah, just haven't did that many.
Yeah, if we approve the request, change the number of lots, we wouldn't be approving this. We're just approving.
And that's just a conceptual plan, that's correct.
So this will change.
Right. The planning commission, the plat would have to go to the planning commission first in order to be able to, for them to lay out the lot sizes and, you know, the configuration of the lots and that kind of stuff. But you've still got the other conditions. You've still got to have a hundred foot around the outside of that. You've got to tap that a hundred foot to.
That will change, because that's on here.
Yeah, it's on there, plus, I think there'd be one more road off of three fifteen, the other condition instead. But that is, you know, a conceptual plan that is there, and the planning commission will have to approve the file. But if it's, if you put the limit, you know, on them, then that's, you can't exceed that.
All right.
I have two questions. One is for Mr. Pope, and one's for Mr. Williams, if I may. Chair, do you see any problem, do you see any water issues whatsoever in that? I know I can't, you know.
I don't think servicing fifty more lots, of course, we're running by the engineers, they've got a water model in our system, but the subdivision is located right under five hundred thousand gallon water tank, literally. Now, unless there are some elevation issues, that's not a high-pressure area, being a hundred tank. And I have, on the last phase, I had to get with Mr. Mason on some of that. We just had to address it. So we would have to look at, and if it would need to, the entrance coming into three fifteen, if we would need to make another tie in there to loop the water in there, I mean, we would just have to look at that stuff. But as far as, as far as being able to service fifty lots, yes, ma'am, we could.
Okay, thank you.
That is one of the conditions, is those water issues to be resolved prior to.
The other thing is, Brian, I noticed when we, our packets were put together, you had not had any comments either for or against.
No, at that time, I had not. I did receive one the day that it went to the planning commission, and I received, I have received one since. But none, it was not necessarily complaints, there were mostly just inquiries.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? I don't hear a change in motion.
Sheriff will make the motion. This is my district. Further concerns have been expressed, and I understand those concerns. And looking at the overall plan here, I think it's a reasonable plan, and I would make a motion to approve the change in the condition from three hundred to three fifty. I would like to, since we're not approving this plan, we're just approving the change in conditions, I would like to insist upon an additional condition, and that would be this third entrance to three fifteen from the new section, which is on the plat here. I think it's necessary to have that additional ingress and egress to the property from Highway three fifteen.
All right. So that's an additional, additional condition, right? Do you have a second?
I'll start.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I am not in favor of this. Looking at minutes of the planning commission and of the board commissioners back in two thousand and one, in rebuttal, according to minutes, it was Mr. Fager who said that there would be a maximum of three hundred lots. It was not a conclusion imposed or suggested by the planning commission or the board of commissioners. I do feel that far, then, up in advance, they should have been able to work out the lots to keep it to three hundred. And I feel that for something that impacts the neighbors this much, that our citizens should have the right to rely on the decisions of this board and be able to count on, something that is consequential today.
Amen.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion to approve with the additional condition of a, one additional entrance from Highway three fifteen, these are the preparation plans? Close. Thank you. I do want to make a comment, because it's an opportunity to educate the public a little bit. Mr. O'Connor, your concerns on the water?
It's across the board, that's just the water.
I appreciate, I appreciate your concern. Water is a very complicated issue. We have been buying water from Columbus for a number of years, because frankly, our water treatment plant does not have the capacity to produce all that's needed in Harris County. We did it several years ago, trying to go to the Corps of Engineers to get permission to greatly increase the cost, the withdrawal, and that was denied by the Corps of Engineers at the level at which we were requested. They didn't say that we could get a smaller amount, but that smaller amount, the additions and changes to our water treatment plant, it just didn't make economic sense to do so. Since that time, of course, the water wars have increased rapidly, and getting additional, or withdrawal for additional gallons per day has not looked upon very favorably by the Corps of Engineers. As a matter of fact, the last time I approached the subject with them, they said, we'd be happy to give it to you if you get Columbus to give up some of theirs. So, it is not an issue that we take lightly. While we do pay a little bit more for the water coming from Columbus, it is still.
It's not just the water, sir, it's across the board. They're selling Boston Butts to get radios for the fire department. The kids don't have school boats in their schools.
Mr. O'Connor, we're not.
Somebody's got to pay for it.
This is, Mr. O'Connor, this is only about making this comment just to try and explain your concern about water.
I understand. I worked for the Corps of Engineer for twelve years.
Yeah.
I've been in the engineering my whole life.
That's, I have tried to answer your question, and that's it, sir, so there'll be no more discussion on that. Thank you. Okay, then we'll go back to the project status report. Mr. Wood?
Yep. I think Carol Silva did this back in her day. And I had an effort to try and keep you informed a little bit better, keeping track of the major projects that are going on and giving you a, an update every meeting. First one is the radios, and I'm understanding this issue a little bit better than I was previously. The radios, the replacement radios are all in the warehouse now, ready to be issued. The reason they're holding up is we're getting this new console system, the new transmitters with extra horsepower. They need programming different than the current console, so if you put them out there now, two weeks later, three weeks later, you have to reprogram, and then that's gonna cause a big mess, so. Thursday night, we're going to, at the chief's meeting, Dean's gonna be there, I will be in attendance, hopefully just keeping my eye shut. But going through this whole thing with fire chiefs about the new consoles and the reprogramming and trying to get this whole issue squared away, and then move forward from there fairly quickly, once they get the new consoles installed. So we're talking, I think it's probably end of the month, to have everything done. Waverly Hall should be done by the end of the month with their new tower. And the West Point Tower is up and working, but it will also receive the upgrade, all the other stuff going on. Apparently they're doing some testing right now of a deferred power at their EOC that they have up there. Next item is the Washington survey. I talked to the surveyor today, they're having to do some field checks of their data, anticipate be having that ready to tour for us by Friday. Washington, I've talked to the attorney about this already, I'm not gonna vent on the dice, but the engineer did not show for our scheduled meeting on Monday. They have the plans that we were working off of, were issued in September. The contractor's working off a set of plans that were issued in October that were never given to us. So we got some issues to work through there. Commissioner Tuning was there. She knows I'm not happy camper, but we are, Robinson is doing what they're supposed, supposed to be doing. I'm not happy with some design issues, and we'll, we'll work on that. I would have venting on the dice, as I said. There was a special, I sent out a couple of months ago, maybe, you know, it's maybe forty-five days ago, the L-MIG is doing a supplemental award, and they're asking for striping, guardrails, and things like that. And I sent that out, just a reminder, if you still have anything in your district that you think needs striping, guardrails, signage, safety signage, please get it in to me in the next week or so, so I can get that out to the state by the first of May. Airport, yes, the vehicle has arrived, arrived today. We anticipate having it up in a few days. They are going to start paving the taxiway tomorrow. There's, that's supposed to go fairly rapidly, all the, all the fill is down, question run, that looks very impressive. However, they're looking at potentially rain Thursday, which will delay the process. I think if they get the first layer down, that will allow it to dry a lot quicker than, than to be able to get back on versus if it rains on the question run, then it penetrates and that's a whole lot of issues. We're working through a few issues on the anchors, specifically one issue as far as they went to level the floors, and they ground up some of the finish on there, so it needs to have sealant. The contractor proposed a sealant, the engineer refused it, he said it's not of the quality that we need. So they have, and we're gonna have to come up with a solution on that, and as soon as that happens, and we get sealed, we'll be able to move forward with moving folks in there. And this is the super good news thing.
Yeah.
Our animal control for the month of March was zero kill. Not only were they not at zero kill, they actually had an adoption rate of a hundred and thirty-two percent, because they adopted everything out, they brought in in the month, plus a few extra. So we've been doing some good things there.
Can I ask one question about that?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, our animal control does not actually do the adoptions, it's in conjunction with-
We work with the, with the human side of it, yes, we are doing some adoptions in our side.
We are doing some adoptions, great.
That has changed with the latest, I forget, ma'am. We're doing a lot of things that we used to not do.
Good.
Including vaccinations, good stuff. And I'm very happy with that situation. Now, some more bad news. The sun is shining today, but as you know, Friday we had some fairly significant weather. Most specifically, Ginn Lake Road is impassable right now. Overflow is not working correctly on the dam, I'm gonna get Jack McLug out there to have a look at it. But all the, all the water's been coming through the overflow pipe, well, the beavers don't like the water coming through the overflow pipe, so they block up the overflow pipe, which then undermines our road, so. We will, we are not gonna jump on that like some of the other ones we have, because of the staging that's required for the distance of the run, and because of the moisture, the wetness. When we get in there, we need to get in there, have everything in place, and do it quickly, so we will stop pile stuff to make it happen. So that'll take a few days, and then when they do the repair, they will do it quickly. So in case people get a little impatient, we have to do some staging, and we can't get in there because of, there's a light there.
So what you're saying is that we indefinitely have to detune that area?
Not indefinitely, no, but it's a little more complicated than some of the other things you've had to deal with because of the, we're not gonna risk our workers, and we may have to dam off part of that portion, and we may have to vote, depending on-
But you have to detune it now.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's not, there's, there's, each side has ingress, egress out, so they're not blocked in. It's kind of an area where there's, there's no houses.
But it's not too traffic through there.
Correct. So don't go driving there at night and accidentally run off there. So we had several roads underwater, and we've got things, I think, pretty well caught up now with sunny weather. So that is the status report, if, if you like. If you like that, let me know, if you want it added in a different format, just trying to find ways to serve y'all better.
All right. Did anybody else got anything that, need an update on, Greg?
All right.
Thank you, Greg, I think, I think it's good to have that as part of, as part of the program.
Okay.
It's good to have a comment there also.
I can email it to you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure how well I'm gonna explain this, that's why Spin's here. We had a suspect that was attempting to elude or, or find Sheriff's Department employees, and decided the way he was gonna do that was head on into a Tahoe, which I think his car was in worse shape, but the Tahoe was towed. The issue is that their, the replacement cost is twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and three dollars with the replacement equipment for Dodge Charger. What we received from the insurance company is twenty-two thousand, under ninety-six dollars and fifty cents. My solution, which the sheriff's department does like, but it's the only one I'm authorized to do, is say you have equipment, money in your budget, and spend that to make up the difference. I can't tell them, here's some more money. That's why Spin is here, to see if you can make them whole for that deductible, plus the, the mileage. So what he's asking for is about six thousand dollars and change.
Yes. To explain the incident a little bit better, we have, we, we had a suspect that was involved in stolen property. He was trying to elude us, and he did a twenty-fifteen Chevy Tahoe head on. The deputy was not injured, neither were the suspects, other than minor injuries. He did tow about two vehicles, theirs and ours. We had George State Patrol come down and work the accident. The other driver is at fault, he was on the wrong side of the road and needed the deputy head on. The problem that we're having is, when we bought this vehicle, we put this vehicle in service in July of last year. It's practically a brand-new truck, it's got twenty thousand, nine hundred and ninety miles on it. The vehicle, when we purchased it, purchased it under a state contract price, state bid price. We would probably not go with Chevy Tahos again due to the increase in price. About four o'clock this afternoon, the price on a Chevy Tahoe is about thirty-five thousand dollars. They're good utility vehicles, they transport cargo, they pull trailers, we're happy with that, but we have some trucks in our fleet that can do that. So the reason we have decided against that is one taxpayer mind. I can buy a Dodge Charger for, I think the paperwork, I brought the paperwork from Miss Nancy to give to you, but the other, the Dodge Charger is twenty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. It's about a twelve thousand dollar difference than a Chevy Tahoe. The equipment in the Dodge Charger would be fifty-three hundred dollars, which comes to twenty, twenty-eight, five oh three, forty-three cent. The problem that we're having, and the problem the sheriff has, is the way the insurance is working for us. When we, the, the Tahoe, in which I have four appraisals from different companies, online companies, that truck is worth about thirty-five thousand dollars right now with the mileage. Our insurance company has requested that we provide them with a copy of the bill of sale, we bought the truck at twenty-nine thousand, five ninety-five. And they're also wanting to dub ten cents per mile, or per miles on that vehicle. Which, and of course, we have to meet our deductible, and that's something that will work out between our insurance company and the bad guy's insurance company. But understandably, we can never replace a vehicle with, with the way this current status is on our insurance. So it drops, drops the rate of, of return down for us. If we, we've never, and I've talked with some insurance companies, and I've talked with some appraisers, we've never had, you never have to provide an insurance company with what you pay for a car for them to appraise your car. They appraise your car for what it's worth, not for what you paid for it. If you buy a vehicle and get a good deal on a vehicle and you wreck that vehicle, they're not gonna reimburse you just what you paid for that vehicle, they're gonna give you fair market value. If we were getting fair market value for our Tahoe, we'd be in a whole lot better shape, and I wouldn't be asking you for six thousand dollars to replace the vehicle. And I'm already reducing to try to, try to put a car back on the road. Like I said, if we had to replace this vehicle with a vehicle like that, my request would need for a lot more money. But we're in a situation now, and I've talked with Mr. John, and I've talked with Miss Nancy, to maybe look at our insurance, the five thousand dollar deductible is understandable, look at our insurance situation, and ask some questions on what it's gonna cost to replace the vehicle. If it is our fault, and we do have a situation like this, where we have a forty thousand dollar car that they're wanting to give us twenty thousand dollars for, that's just, that's just something we need to look at, I believe. Understandably, we do get them, like I said, at state bid prices. That, that's a deal we get because we buy in bulk, we make it for a certain period of time, and we shouldn't be penalized for that by our insurance company. It's just our feelings, that's the sheriff's feelings. Now, with that being said, like I said, the difference in buying a Charger versus a Chevy Tahoe, the difference from the check that she's receiving from the insurance company for the deductible rate is about sixty-three hundred dollars. Five thousand of that, once the insurance company has the deductible, so we're looking at about thirteen hundred dollars once the deductible's reached with the two insurance companies, they'll get that back. Like I said, it isn't that fault record on their behalf, we have charged the person accordingly with criminal damage to government property. Both vehicles were totaled, and like I said, George State Patrol deemed that it was not our fault on the accident.
What was the number?
He was, I think he was seventeen. The other cars, yeah, seventeen and eighteen.
Did the bad guy have insurance?
They did have insurance on the car, yes, ma'am.
Have we?
The, I've actually, the, the passenger in the car, it was his mother's car. And he allowed a friend to drive it because he had suspended license. So the friend drove the car, which was his mother's car, and it, it, it was like a, I'm gonna say a two thousand and eight Dodge Avenger, it was a pretty nice car.
You know, if we, you know, the insurance carrier, you know, we're not limited just to five thousand dollar deductible, you know, it's, it's what it would require to take to make us whole.
Yes, sir.
And I don't see why we can't, you know, demand the, the difference, that thirteen hundred dollars out of the insurance carrier.
Well, not only-
I mean, the other side, the other guy's insurance-
Right, not only the thirteen hundred dollars, the thirteen hundred dollars is me buying a vehicle that's ten thousand, or twelve thousand dollars cheaper than the original one we lost in the wreck. And, you know, mine and the sheriff's feelings on this is, we've got somebody out of Columbus that has hit us that on, you know, a piece of our equipment, and we, as taxpayers, and we, as the county, is footing the bill for that. You know, eventually, I'm sure that insurance company will work that out, but I think it has a lot to do with fair market value of the vehicle.
Well, and it depends on what, on how our policy is, is drawn and entered, and I've talked about this this afternoon, and, you know, exactly how some of our, some of our vehicles are, are insured, and they, they will, it's the issuance cost.
All of our vehicles are issued or insured at a stated value, the actual cash value, but we have to provide them the cost of what we paid for that vehicle. And their policies are not gonna give us more than what we paid for the vehicle, whether it's on state contract or in car dealership, like you and I, we have to-
Is that the policy or is that the contract we have with-
I haven't read that ten times fine print, but I have a question to him again about that same issue.
I think if-
Nancy raised that question today, is, you know, it would be fair market, you know, whether it's a fair market value or whether it's, you know, the maximum of the costs.
Okay, but we have not tried to collect-
Our insurance company is subrogating with the other insurance companies, so if they're successful, we will get our deductible back, and possibly we may get something else back, there's-
We wanna make sure we had done that.
Yes, ma'am, our insurer is with ACCG, by the way.
I would think-
When did this accident occur?
Mark Seventeen.
I would think if, if our policy with them is, you know, allows us to, to go with fair market value, we still have to, we'll contact the state insurance commissioner.
Well, yeah, it, it kind of depends on how, where our policy is written, I was trying to talk, I found out about this this afternoon, up this minute and then, but I came in, I went and talked to Nancy, and it, it, the way our policy, I think, is written, you know, I haven't looked at the policy, but what Nancy relates to me, and I know she, she knows, that it's, one cost, the way, the way it's written now, is we're gonna get cheaper than we would if we, you know, got the full fair market value back out of it, you know, the actual, actual cost.
That you're prepared to work with.
Yeah, and so there's enough difference in there, I guess, to make up, you know, to make, make, make a, a, a real point of, of going that direction. And of course, that's come down to a policy matter, you know, like they, not a policy matter, it's, yeah, it's a policy, the insurance policy, which is also a decision you have to make.
The matter is if you want to-
Yeah, yeah.
Where the cost versus the cost, so.
I guess that's something, an argument for another day, but certainly if you want, you know, you're gonna have to request the entire value of, you know, the, the deductible plus the rest of the equipment, at least. Or, I have an idea, I don't know the way that'd work.
They need the vehicle, they need to work out the details with the insurance company and get it all worked out.
Yeah, it depends on how much coverage they've got too, because, you know, I was gonna say, well, you know, what we can do is turn around and go, you know, back and get them, the, the driver of the car, for the full value of this vehicle. And, and they're the ones that are gonna have to, have to pay it, but it's going to be, we're gonna be limited by what their property damage coverage is on that vehicle that caused the accident. And, you know, of course, that doesn't mean that they won't have to pay the rest of it, but they might not have a, they might not have the money to go, you know, pay it, and you may not be able to collect it, so. I think it's gonna kind of depend on, on the, what, you know, how that makes me responsible, these other folks are. But you may wanna take a look at your overall policy and decide whether or not, you know, you want that coverage, or you wanna pay, you know, some more, some more money for a different type of coverage.
So was it the son of the owner, it was a friend of the son, is that right?
The owner's son was in the car, and he let a friend drive it.
But the friend was driving it, yes, sir. It was the friend who caused the accident.
Yes, sir.
You may have two shots at it.
The driver as well as the owner.
So we may or may not need the extra money, but you need the vehicle right away before you do that.
She's got, she's got, I think it's twenty-two, is that right? And the price, yeah.
We got that extra three hundred today, with that mileage issue.
The mileage, so I mean, we're, we're, that's sixty-two, sixty-three hundred difference. And the, and the twenty-two does also include the five thousand dollar deductible that we paid upfront, which more than likely would be- And the twenty-two does also include the five thousand dollar deductible that we paid upfront, which more than likely will be back anyway. So at worst-case scenario, we're looking at thirteen hundred dollars.
Refresh my memory, I know we've had vehicles totaled before.
Yes, sir.
How is this different from what I was, or how?
I think the major difference is the year of the vehicle. I think it's, you know, we've had a crowded course, we've had, we've had a lot of high-mileage cars, but with the newness of this vehicle, and on top of that is General Motors has gone so high on these vehicles now, you know, as far as replacement, like I said, if I had to replace an apple with an apple, it would be a whole lot more. And that's what we're even looking at this year, when we do our, when we're doing the budget request, we're not, we're staying away from General Motors, because we could almost buy two Dodges with the same warranty, the price of the GM product. And that's the other thing we're looking at with the maintenance issue, we're having some maintenance issues going on.
I, I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and pay the money for the Dodge Charger out of general funds, and that we work with the company to arrive at a better settlement, that, in my experience, is the, they think that they have you over the barrel, that they honestly don't completely, that you have the right to the value of your vehicle, regardless of what you pay for, you know, particularly if you're replacing something cheap. And so, and insurance companies, six months later, are a lot more likely to come with better terms than they do. Oh, well, this is all we can give you.
That's a long motion.
Then we go ahead and take the general funds immediately, and work with the insurance company.
That's a much better motion. Okay, we have most, we have second. Oh, Marley, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, any other questions? I agree, I think we need to get that vehicle on the road, we'll take our chances with the insurance company.